Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of a Whole for February 4th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Okay, with that, we have a quorum, we have minutes from the January 14th meeting. Vice President Spatafor, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move the approval of the minutes from January 14th, 2019.
I have a motion on the minutes, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign, passes unanimously. This is the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, this is time to come to the podium and give us your name and address if you could please come.
Good evening, Kathy Miles. I would like to thank the Fire Department for updating the fire code to deal with the very flammable chemicals that will be used in the marijuana industry during the processing. I'm especially concerned about that because of the allowance of grow facilities and process facilities right in high-density residential neighborhoods, including my own. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. So if we could have the Fire Department, please come forward and if you could take a seat at the table up here in front. This particular ordinance was before public safety and what we have been trying to do over last year and this year is even as an ordinance or rezoning comes out of the committee is to have it at Committee of a Whole, have an opportunity for any questions to be answered at that time. There is a recommendation to set a public hearing. This would have happened at our meeting on the 28th and we would have looked at setting it for the 11th and this is on our schedule for our special meeting later this evening to set the public hearing for the 11th and because of the nature of this, there's also the request to pass it on the 11th because of the inspections and the things that are going to be happening. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the Fire Department, make sure your green light is on, on the microphone, and if you could go over this section of the fire code and what you'd like added to our codes.
Thank you, President Wood. Interim Fire Chief Mike Tobin, I'm going to turn over the review to the Fire Marshal, Marshawn Blake.
Thank you, Chief Tobin. The section, thank you.
You can pull that real close to you.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good now.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The section of the 2018 International Fire Code that we're adopting now, what we'd like to see adopted is Chapter 39 and it applies specifically to processing and extraction facilities as it pertains to the marijuana grow or marijuana industry and it gives us, it would give us as a Fire Department, as well as the customers, more specific guidelines that apply directly to their industry and the regulation thereof and would give us the shall and shall nots as far as what they can use, how they can use it, and to keep it safe as opposed to trying to use the code and meet the intent of the code, this is more specific. And I believe OCA is reviewing the rest of the 2018 code that applies to everything else, but as you stated earlier, because of pending inspections and the rest of the processes, we wanted to get this in there so we could more accurately enforce the code with that industry.
Mr. Blake, if you could go over some of the high points in the code, some of the things that it will cover and the importance of why these are things that you're going to be looking for.
Yes, ma'am. I'll just touch on the sections and explain them briefly. Processing and extraction, it talks about where it can be located and how it is to be built, the ovens they use and the processes, and what chapters of the code more specifically define what they are, the use of flammable and combustible liquids and those restrictions, liquefied petroleum gas, because there are multiple processes or multiple ways to achieve the extraction process, to extract the oil from the plant, and it covers the majority of those processes and in a general sense, if someone invents or creates another process that the code doesn't cover, it gives us a way to meet the safety standard even though that specific chemical that a person may use isn't specifically mentioned in the code.
And does it speak to the storage of those chemicals in that as well?
The storage of those chemicals is covered in the International Fire Code already.
Okay.
But that's one of the only things that's covered in the code. This section of the code speaks more to the process of extraction. So the storage of maximum allowable quantities of flammable and combustible liquids, gases, et cetera, is already addressed in the International Fire Code as well as NFPA, which we can refer to by reference. But this applies more to the process and the handling and the setup of the actual process of extracting the oil from the plant.
Have you done, we know that there have been some provisional licenses that have been given out as far as grow facilities, have the processors, has there been any for processors that have been given out and have you started any inspections?
There have been some, I will call them preliminary inspections, and there have been some approvals made, but they were all made pending final inspection because some of them were not completely ready or some of them were not built out and there was nothing physically there to inspect. So I made those approvals to allow the process to continue, but I put the clause in that they weren't going to be finally approved until the actual physical inspection of whatever type of facility was able to be done because it was completed and they had gone through the already building and fire code process to apply for said.
And this is why the expediency of getting this done and in place so that when you're doing the final inspections, you'll have this to utilize.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand that it's, one of the reasons we're doing this is for the processing facilities for medical marijuana, but will this change, are there other industries that are extracting oils or doing some of this that this will apply to as well?
There are other industries that extract oil from plants. This section says processing and extraction facilities. It does not specifically say marijuana, so it doesn't pigeonhole us only to that. Marijuana just happens to be the prevalent one at this time, so it could be applied to a similar process with other products.
Does this cover like the new distilleries that are popping up or does it, you know, that extract from plant materials for alcohol production?
If it's an extraction facility or a processing facility, it would affect it. My pause is because breweries, distilleries, extraction, they get close, but they're different processes, but there are already sections of the existing code that apply to the storage, handling type of facility that the alcohol or products or processes that they would use. The marijuana industry or extracting, extraction industry as it pertains to plants is oil-based and they use flammable and combustible chemicals to extract oil, whereas for example, a distillery uses a process, but it doesn't, the end result isn't always flammable and they don't use a flammable gas or liquid to get to that end result.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the difference.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, then Vice President Spatafor, what we're looking for is a motion to set the public hearing at tonight's special meeting for February 11th.
Madam President, I'd like to make the motion to set the public hearing for the special meeting this evening on February 11th at 7:00 PM to adopt the Chapter 39 of the 2018 International Fire Code.
Having a motion, are there any other questions or concerns? Yes.
I'm sorry, so the motion says 7:00, but if we pass it with 7:00 and we get done at 6:00, will we have to wait until 7:00 to do the special meeting?
The way the special meeting is written is 7:00 or immediately following the Committee of a Whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whichever's later.
Pardon?
Whichever's later, correct?
Yes. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I don't think that there's any need for you to be here at the 7:00 meeting and we'll see you on the 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the external auditor presentation and if we can have Angie and our representative from our audit company come forward. You have your audit book and inside the audit book are different information that has been provided both by Ms. Bennett as well as our internal auditor that's at the back of the book. With that, we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Bennett.
Good evening. I want to make sure, I did bring extra copies if anybody wants. You should have, as Madam President just mentioned, you should have something that says fund financial results, February 4th, City Council presentation, as well as a document that says, at the beginning of it says, City of Lansing Fiscal Year Audit Management Comment Responses, then, oh, thank you, okay, as well as two letters with Raymond letterhead on top. One is titled Independent Auditor's Communications with Those Charged with Governance, the other is Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financially, and so on. So I want to make sure if anybody needs extra copies, I do have copies of those.
And this is everything that was turned over to the state?
The state does not require the audit management comments, but the other items all are filed with the state.
All right, thank you.
Correct, yes. Oh, and I'm sorry, not the financial results presentation.
Okay. All right. Are we ready? All right.
Okay, thank you. I have with me Paul Matts. He is the assurance principal for Raymond Robson. They are our external audit firm that we are contracting with at this point. They do an external audit of the city's finances and internal controls. The purpose of that, as Paul will explain, is to make sure that when we issue a financial statement that it is done so in a way that decision-makers can reliably rely on the numbers that are there as well as the public and that those are good numbers, they've been audited. So we are talking about the fiscal year that began July 1st, 2017, and just ended, I shouldn't say just ended, but ended June 30th of 2018. The financial statements, it's called Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that is issued, and you can see it's a rather large document. This is a document, municipal financial reports often actually outnumber in terms of pages some billion-dollar companies, corporations, and that's because the complexity of governmental accounting and reporting. And that's because we are charged with the assurance that we are properly spending the money the way that it should be, so basically showing a lot of accountability, both in terms of the amounts for which we receive the monies as well as the budgetary parameters that were set for those monies. So yeah, they are very complex financial statements, but I'm going to walk you through them a little bit. Paul will also be talking about that a bit, and then I'm going to go over basically a synopsis of our year-end results. So in the financial statements, the very, very beginning, so starting on page three going to page six is a transmittal letter, that's basically just a sort of introduction, let's, readers, maybe resident, maybe city council, but anybody who wants to read those financial statements, it gives an idea of the city and then talks about pretty much an introduction of the city and the financial statements. On page eight, I'm very happy to be able to say that this is the 40th consecutive year that the City of Lansing has received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence, so that's 40 consecutive years and that's a big accomplishment. So that is demonstrated on page eight. Then that's followed by auditor report and that's basically what's giving the, and you'll see and Paul will talk about, the clean opinion, basically saying that you can rely on the figures in this financial statement, they have been audited by an external auditor and they give their opinion there. Pages 15 to 25 then, it's what's called a management discussion and analysis, and that is a narrative overview of the financial statements. And I'll get into that a little bit because it talks about what I'm going to talk about in a minute, just both our consolidated statements as well as our fund statements, I'll get into that in a minute. But that's again, a narrative summary of that. So if you read nothing else in the financial report, that is a narrative, that's a little bit easier to read. And the basic financial statements then are pages 30 and 32, and what that is, is that's a consolidated view of our entire government, of our entire city operations. So when we talk about government accounting, we talk about various funds and our structure is set up in funds because of different revenue sources we receive. Some we receive that are designated for certain purposes, they may be grants, they may be our gas and weight tax monies that have to be spent on streets, and then we have some funds that we charge user rates and fees, like our sewer fund and our parking fund, where those monies that are generated for that are to support that system, they're not supposed to be, they're not being levied for things like police and fire and things like that. So what the financial statement does is it starts at the very beginning with a consolidated view and then as you go back farther throughout the CAFR, as we call it, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, then it breaks it out into those various funds. And by doing that, then it gets into the accountability of how did we do compared to what was budgeted and such, and it gives more detail.
Ms. Bennett, if you could explain just briefly the government and business types, if you could, you or Paul could explain those.
Yes, absolutely. So on page 30 to 32, you will see the terms government-wide, well, government-wide statements means the overall consolidated statements of the city, but then governmental-type activities are those that are generally tax-supported and/or grant very specific donor-funded type of dollars. Business-type activities are the latter of what I talked about before, where we are levying fees that are supposed to cover the operations of a certain operation, so something like parking and sewer. It's different than our fees that we charge for parks and recreation because we do charge some nominal fees, that's in our general fund and in what we call our governmental-type activity funds, but those are ones that are not designed to cover the full cost. They're nominal fees, they're not designed to fully fund that cost, so that's a difference. The business-type are almost like, they're almost like if they were to be run like a company in the private sector, that's the business-type activities. And as we get through the fund results, we'll break those down a little bit in terms of which funds fell into those. And then there's also a series, or there's also a section in here that has a lot of note disclosures and things that talk about the statements. So looking at the financial results that you have, the summary you have, on the second page or the first page of numbers here, broke out some numbers for you because what we talk about the general fund, the general fund, we're all very familiar with, that's our biggest fund for the city.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick again. Again, what she's speaking to now is the paperclipped material that was given to you, the City of Lansing's financial year. Okay.
Yeah, the front of it looks like this, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yeah.
That's all right.
So the first page behind the cover page then.
Yeah, it was stuck in the back of the binder. Okay. There you go. And she's on the second page of that.
Okay.
Go ahead now, I think we're all set.
Okay, so what this is, is a breakout and explanation of some of the numbers with the, so we have to, in order to be able to issue and have audited financial statements and have a quote-unquote clean opinion, we have to follow certain governmental accounting standards. And those standards have become a little more complex and one of those standards actually combines the general fund and our stadium fund. So the presentation on that first page of numbers is basically breaking that out so you can see how much in terms of the year-end results, if you were just to look in the CAFR, then you might not be able to, you wouldn't be able to easily extract that. So this breaks it out a bit. For the general fund, we had 129, almost about $130 million in revenues and we had about 120, when we combine it with the transfers going out, about $129 million in expenses. We had, or I should say about 128 and a half, because then we, at the end of the year, we had a $1.7 million increase in our reserves. So that's the amount that the revenues exceeded our expenditures and that's the amount that went to reserves to build up those reserves. In the box underneath, it shows a breakdown of that.
I'm going to stop you again. Some people call that the rainy day fund, it's, you know, it has a number of names, so.
Yep. If you go to the box underneath, that has a breakout. So there's two components to our reserves. The general fund has a balance in it that is what called basically the fund balance, and then we have a budget stabilization fund. And so the combination of that is what we call our reserves, and again, yes, that is sometimes referred to as rainy day fund, our reserves, savings account, that type of thing. So this has a breakout of those two amounts, the general fund at the beginning of the year, the budget stabilization fund, so the two of those combined were $15.3 million. And as of July 1st of 2017, we ended the year with $17 million when you combine those two funds. When we look at that, we compare that amount as a percentage to our expenditures of the amount that was spent in the general fund, and we are now up to 13.3%. That is up from 12.4% the prior fiscal year. And as we've talked about before, our target is a range of 12 to 15%. We have entered that, as of a year ago, we entered that bottom range, we are in that range right now, we have not hit the top of our target at this point. So that is good news because as we have talked about before, the importance of reserves in the face of a possible another recessionary type of or economic pullback is very important, especially when you consider the downsizing the city has gone through over the past decade and the ability to, in terms of flexibility, to react to that is being more limited than it used to be. So that is important that we are building those up. The following pages, and there's some verbiage in there that kind of talks about the, how to tie those numbers into the CAFR in case you were wanting to do that and why there are some differences between the numbers on that page and the CAFR. The very next page of that, of this handout then, has on the top of it, other operating funds, unrestricted fund balances as of June 30th, 2018. The top section of that is what we call our governmental funds that we just talked about. These are our ones that are designated revenue type of sources that have to be spent for a specific purpose. And we have there listed the balances of the, what we sort of call unassigned or unrestricted fund balances that were available and/or as of June 30th. Now, when I say that, we do call them committed because they have to be spent for a specific purpose. So because when you look at our major local streets fund, there's about $7.3 million there, however, those can only be spent for streets, we can't use that for police operations, we can't use that for other types of things. So those are available for streets, but not for other purposes. So that does give us a synopsis of the fund balances. Now, you'll see some zeros next to some grant funds, that is the way grant funds work. Generally, we spend money, we get reimbursement, it's zero at the end of the year, so there's no concern over there being zero, that's the way it should be.
I have a question from Councilmember Spitzley.
I just, so, and maybe it's just the nomenclature that I'm not used to, but if it's only, I don't understand then why it's under the unrestricted, unassigned, I mean, it is restricted funds, isn't it? It can only be used for a major, so can you explain to me what I'm missing here?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when we look at the given funds, let's say our major streets fund, at the end of the year, there are, you have your difference between, you basically have the balance at the end of the year. Some of that money, even within that fund, is restricted for some other things. There might be some outstanding contracts that we've entered into and not all the money was spent for those. So when we say unrestricted, I'm alluding to the fact that it's basically spendable, it's available for next-year operations, it's not.
But only for a specific purpose.
Correct, yes. So within that fund, it's unrestricted, but it is restricted in that that available balance has to be spent for that purpose.
In essence, there has not been a purchase order that has been allocated for those particular dollars.
Correct, and there are some other nuances, there's monies tied up in inventories and there's some things that restrict within the fund that can, that, so when we talk about fund balance, we really want to talk and or reserves, we want to talk about unrestricted amounts because we want to know how much is available, yeah.
Did Councilmember Dunbar have a question as well?
Thank you. I had one on this and then one on the prior page too. The, and my question was very similar to Councilmember Spitzley. It seems confusing just because it is not unrestricted, it's like, it's classed, but it's not, you can't take it out of that account. So I think that the So I think that the, the term unrestricted, I see what you're saying is that it's, it doesn't, it's not encumbered, as Councilmember Spitzer just said, with a purchase order, but it can't be moved outside of that account. And so that, that nomenclature is confusing to those who might read that. And I don't know if there's a better way to do it in the accounting world, if you've got, I mean, we use the word, it's classed in, in our world, but, and the other question that I had is actually on the prior page. When you have a seventeen or one-point-seven million surplus and it's assigned, it looks like the majority of it was assigned to the general fund versus the budget stabilization fund, what goes into making that decision as to what percentage goes into the general fund versus budget stabilization? Because I think that that's also confusing to folks when they hear, like, we call it rainy day, we call it, you know, general fund, you know, savings account, whatever, but those are, they're used for two different things. So could you speak to that and how the decision is made to put money where?
I can, yes. The, the budget stabilization fund was set up by ordinance, and there are restrictions on the use of those funds, so they are less flexible in terms of use than, than the amount in the, in the general fund. That ordinance, that same ordinance has a requirement that, that twenty-five percent of any surplus be put in the, in the budget stabilization fund. So the majority goes to the general fund, twenty-five percent of that goes to the budget stabilization fund.
Is that a formula you couldn't, you always follow?
I'm sorry?
Is that a formula across the bank, I mean, across the board for all surplus at the end of the year?
Only for the general fund.
Twenty-five and one?
Yeah. The general fund is the only one that has a budget stabilization fund.
Are there other questions before we move on? Okay, my only question would be, under community development block grant, it shows a zero, is that just the emergency shelter grant funds, or is that all community development block grant funds?
That is a combination of our community development block grants, our home grant, and our emergency solutions grant. And those, those are grant funds, and so what happens with those funds is we spend money first, and then we get reimbursement. So there's always a zero fund balance because basically, and we're able to, what we call accrue those revenues and basically say, okay, those revenues, we know we're going to be able to get them from the, you know, reimbursement from the government, so we basically can, even if, even if we haven't gotten a full reimbursement, we are able to, what we call accrue that and, and count that as received. So, so the, so grant funds should show a zero at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're below the line.
Okay, below the line, that's the, our enterprise fund. So again, that's, that's things like our sewer fund, our parking fund, and you see them listed there, as well as our garbage, our, our garbage collection, our recycling, those are all separate funds, and again, those are, those are based on rates and amounts that are designed to recoup the amount of earning those operations. Now, that being said, the, there are two major governmental accounting standards that have come out in the past five years, that have come into play in the past five years, I guess I should say, that have a majorly impacted when you look at the financial statements and those bottom-line numbers. And that is our pension and retiree healthcare obligations. And as well as if you look at those consolidated statements at the beginning of the, of the financial statements, I talked about pages, oh, pages thirty to thirty-two, you'll see some, some, some big negative numbers, and that has to do with our pension, our outstanding pension and retiree healthcare obligations, which we know and have had a lot of discussion on. We have had new standards come into play that require that we book those, those liabilities. Now, when we're talking about our governmental funds, this is where it gets more complicated, we're talking about our governmental funds, our tax-supported, our donation-type of funds, those do not get allocated at the fund basis. They only get funded, they only get allocated when we have the consolidated statements for the whole, for the whole government, so on pages thirty, thirty-two. So if you look on page thirty, thirty-two, you'll see a pension obligation, you'll see a retiree healthcare obligation. If you go backward to where the funds are individually broken out, and we've got the, you know, the general fund and the other governmental funds, those long-term liabilities do not show in those statements. And that has to do with the fact that they're short-term, short-term focused funds, and so on the fund basis, they do not get displayed. However, in our enterprise funds, because an enterprise fund does have a long-term basis by its nature, they are supposed to represent more like a business in terms of, of their government station, statements, those, the pension and the retiree healthcare do get booked directly to those funds. And so that's why we have this display on, on the bottom of this page, because our rates were not designed to recoup all of that when they were set up, and they would be quite astronomical. So, and as well as the state, the state even recognizes that, that as well. So if you look, we have some deficit fund balances that we're talking about, the very first bolded line underneath the, the page numbers there, one, two, three, four of those, of the six funds have negative fund balances, and that, those are because of the pension and retiree healthcare. Now, like I said, the state recognizes that when we, when they, when they look at what is a deficit for a fund, and whether a deficit, whether there's a problem for the fund, they basically pull that out of there, you know, to, to make it, make a short story of it. So that's what this display does, this, this starts with those negative fund balances or those fund balances as there's, as they're displayed in the, in the, in the CAFR here, we, this, then it backs out those pension assets and liabilities and the retiree healthcare liabilities to come up with what we basically call our, our net position without those, those liabilities. And in which case, all of those funds have had positive fund balances at the end of the year.
Angie, in here is not the fleet fund and the IT fund and the enterprises. Why are those not also part of this?
Those, so those are what we call internal service funds, those are a lot like an enterprise fund, but they service the organization, and those obligations also do not hit those, those funds directly. So, so the, the amounts that are shown in the, and actually, I guess I should probably note those on this, probably in an upper section, the amounts that are in the CAFR are, are easier to read than, than having to break that out.
All right, thank you. Are there, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. Just kind of when we talk about the pension liability and the non-pension liability numbers, and I've just always been kind of not suspicious, but just trying to figure out, because that was the biggest problem, it probably still is the biggest problem, our unfunded liabilities, everybody's been talking about it and not, but then again, so I'm just looking at the end, when it says without pension liability, and we have all of them doing well, is that with pension liability, is that the second one down? It still is in the plus. So do we ever see anything that's just like the overall, overall? And again, I'm sorry, I didn't read through it all, and I know you're referring to page thirty and thirty-one and thirty-two probably has a lot of that, but is there a way to just look at it how it really is with everything included? So basically, this whole report shouldn't end up saying that we're good, if that's what it says at the end. I mean, everybody says, oh, yeah, it's all good, but that can't be right when we owe so much, and it's just a big problem.
That is correct. Page, the page thirty, what was that, thirty, pages thirty, thirty-two reflect that, as well as if you look at the enterprise funds. So I, I note on the, a good number of those enterprise funds are on page one-hundred-and-seventy, two of them are on page forty-four. If you look at those, those, those individual funds, it will reflect that. So this is just taking that bottom-line number, which does reflect the pension and the retiree healthcare liabilities, and then this backs them out to, to give you a display with, with and without, yeah.
Councilmember Dunbar, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. So my question is similar, on page thirty-two, at the net position end of the year, you've got your change in net position, your net position at the beginning of the year, and your net position at the end of the year. These negatives in parentheses are the government funds with pension and OPEB taken out of them? That's what the negative is? Okay. So that's goo, I like that, having that as an overall, but I think it really would be helpful, and I know it's not required by the state to have it in the same format, just for us to see how much pension and OPEB is affecting individual departments and funds in that regard. Because this is a, I mean, obviously governmental activities encompasses everything. And, you know, I like, I do like, and I'm, thank you for the explanation, that IT and fleet are internal and that the only things charging into them are other city funds, so you're not going to reflect that on there. But I think, I think that overall, it would be helpful for us to see how those pension and OPEB liabilities affect the other governmental funds department-wise, et cetera, because that, that actually should be taken into account when budgeting for department budgets, I would think.
And we do cover that somewhat in budget. Now, now, it, it's not incorporating the entire liability, but when we look at the next-year requirements and/or funding proposals to address the next year, you know, this, this next annual phase of addressing that, that is, when we, when we go through the budget process, we talk about that, and that is within all of the funds and things, yeah.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I guess, isn't it true that the pension, you know, our big amounts in the hole, has to do with the labor negotiations, and aren't they up this year? Wouldn't whatever negotiation happened this year have a big effect possibly on this number for coming up, I guess, this year or next year, depending on how it settles out?
So on an annual basis for the next year, not as much. When we look at, and it, it, there can be, there can be a, what I'll call significant, when you're looking at the liabilities that we're, we're talking about, the size of what we did, of what we have, a lot of them are, are looking out into the longer term to say, what is the impact of what we are collectively bargaining now, for one, and then, you know, twenty years, thirty years out? Because in a lot of cases, the, those impacts are really, become more evident in the, in the, in the, in the later years. So on an annual basis, that will have a smaller impact, but on a, on a cumulative basis, a much larger one, yeah. And, and the, and the problem being that the, the, the problem or the, the challenge did not come overnight. I mean, that was something that has been decades in the, in making. A lot of this had to do with people living longer, the, the estimates at the time that people that are now retired were working, we, you know, people weren't living as long, investment rate of returns were more, so there's a lot that has changed as well, as well as our, our fringe benefit levels. So it's a combination of things that, that, that has created where we are, and it's not something that can be addressed in one year, but certainly what we do does impact one year, but then, but then when we look in the longer term, that's where we really want to see more of the impact.
Are there other questions? Okay, you can move on.
So that's our financial results, I'm going to pull it over, I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to hand it over to Paul Matz, he's again with Raymond Robson, who performed the external audit.
All right, thank you, Angie, and good evening, everyone. I did want to take a moment to thank Angie and her staff. You probably won't be surprised to know that it's not an enjoyable process to go through the audit. We're on-site for six to eight weeks, you know, disrupting the daily responsibilities otherwise, so appreciate the cooperation, the support that we receive during the audit process. As Angie mentioned, you know, it is our goal as part of the audit to make sure that the financial statements are accurately stated. We want them to be useful for your decision-making processes. As part of the audit, we look at an incredible number of transactions, of balances, to make sure that the financial statements are accurately stated in all material respects. We also look at the system of internal controls throughout the city, mostly focused on the financial areas, and where we have items, internal control recommendations or findings, we will communicate those as part of the audit process also, and I'm going to cover just a couple of those with you here briefly. As Angie mentioned again, within the financial statements on page eleven and going through page thirteen is the independent auditor's report. That's within the large comprehensive annual financial report. What we have issued there is our opinion on the financial statements, and specifically on page twelve of that comprehensive annual financial report, there is a section titled opinions, and within that, we have issued the clean, the unmodified opinion that you want to achieve during the audit process. We can't give a higher opinion than a clean opinion during the audit. So certainly that's very positive news to have that clean opinion as a result of the audit. I would echo Angie's comments on a couple of the items that she recommended in the financials that you consider, such as the management's discussion and analysis that immediately follows that independent auditor's report. The financials continue to grow, I think we're at two-hundred-and-thirteen pages this year, but if you'd like a really good, high-level summary of what took place this year, gives some comparative information to last year, there's some charts, some graphs, a little bit easier to see some trends. It's an area that I would consider recommending that you look at in a little bit more detail. So regarding the, the couple of the internal control items that I wanted to point out, we've issued two separate letters, and the one I would point to first is the one with a painfully long title, but it starts the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting. It's just a couple-of-page letter. And again, this is where we report what we consider findings related to the internal controls, and some of them are really just requirements of the accounting standards that where we identify certain items, we're required to put them in writing. So you can see on the third page of that document is, it's a finding number twenty-eighteen-dash-zero-zero-one on material audit adjustments. Now, as I mentioned, it's the goal as part of the audit to make sure that the financial statements are accurately stated. It's not uncommon that during the audit process, there are adjustments to the records that come up, some of which are identified internally during the audit process, some of which the auditor identifies as well. And whenever we have audit adjustments that come up as part of the audit, we are required to communicate that fact to council, just letting you know that during the audit process, there were adjustments that, that came up. So that's the first one of those findings, what that relates to. The second item that we reported on, item twenty-eighteen-dash-zero-zero-two, on the last page of that document, relates to the preparation and the submission of the, the information we've really just been talking to regarding the pension and the OPEB, which is essentially the retiree healthcare. Other post-employment benefits is what OPEB stands for. There is really an incredible amount of information that needs to get accumulated and submitted to the actuary as part of this process. There were a few errors that we identified that were in the initial information that was submitted. It comes very late in the audit process, again, just because of the significant amount of information that's required, so it does cause a little bit of, you know, last-minute audit adjustments and, and changes to the financial statement. So it's really just encouraging that information to be as streamlined as possible and to continue to make that a priority, and that that information is submitted to the actuary as soon as practical. Any questions on those two items in particular before I would move on?
Any questions?
Okay. Then the other report in letter format, again, is called the independent auditor's communication with those charged with governance. The first several pages of this document are very standard boilerplate information that we're required to communicate as part of the audit. Talks a little bit about what we do as part of the financial statement audit. On page two of that document, there's a section called significant accounting estimates that starts about two-thirds of the way down that page. You know, recognizing that there are estimates in the financial statements, depreciation of capital assets, certainly the pension and the post-employment healthcare are very significant estimates. We look at the estimates, we look at the assumptions, make sure that they appear reasonable to us, but we do point out the fact that there are significant estimates in the financial statements. There's a couple of sections on page three regarding difficulties encountered during the audit, where we've just mentioned again, some of the timeliness consideration with some of the information. Within the disagreements with management section at the very bottom of that page, had we had, you know, clashes with management if we weren't getting information, we were requesting disagreements on accounting policies, we would have to report those to you. Certainly, that's never been an issue or, or something that's come up during, during the audit process. So that's on a very high, high level. Again, it's a pretty boilerplate communication. If you were on council last year, you probably saw the same letter. If you were on council last year, you probably saw the same letter, and the dates are rolled forward a year from what they were last year. There's a couple of attachments to that document. Attachment A is called Comments and Recommendations, and there's a couple of items that are noted here. We don't really consider these findings, per se, like the couple of items I mentioned previously. They're more sort of as an introductory paragraph references. There are other opportunities for strengthening internal controls, looking at some minor compliance items, improving operational efficiency, so, you know, I won't go through those in, in detail unless there's any particular questions, but the one I would, you know, specifically point out is the last one that shows up there, on the pension and the post-employment plan funding. Just because it is such a significant liability, we continue to want to bring that to your attention. It sounds like there is conversations that are being held related to it. But again, it's, it's a very significant number in the financial statements, and so the, the point of the comment really there is just to continue to monitor the funding situation of those plans. The other one I will point out is there's an attachment B. If you're really anxious to find out what's upcoming in the accounting world over the next few years, there are a couple of standards that will have an impact on the city's financial statements, and, and certainly will work with the city at that time to make sure that everything is accurately updated, but there are some significant changes, specifically GASB 84 on accounting for fiduciary activities will have an impact on the city's financials in a couple of years. Those were the high-level items. I know Angie's provided some follow-up comments to the audit items that I went on, but any questions or anything I might be able to help clarify?
I think one of the questions that I repeatedly ask during these processes is the repeat comments, and looking at those, and whether there was any improvements with that or not, and I'm not sure who wants to, to answer that.
Sure. So, what are the, the one item, or the one handout that we haven't covered yet is the one that's titled, at the very top of it, City of Lansing Fiscal Year 2018 Audit Management Comment Responses to Independent, so there's basically a two, a two-line heading there. It looks like this, I don't know if you can see that from here. What this does is it basically copies the auditor's management comments that Paul alluded to, and then our response to that. The very first one, these were repeat comments from the prior year. The very first one, in terms of the stale dating reconciling items, we, that was a repeat comment, it was on, on last year's audit as well. We got through about 90% of that. There's about 10%, outstanding that we were not able to, and this, what this is, is this is what we call sheeting with the state, and, and this is amounts that, where we have cash and unclaimed cash and checks and thing, or not cash, I'm sorry, unclaimed checks that are outstanding, and in order, and so, we, we as municipality have to, to turn those amounts over to the state so that someone then can try to claim their money. However, being able to turn that over to the state, there's a lot of requirements by the state in terms of the information they need, and that's not the easiest to obtain. So, again, we, we, we got through about 90% of it, we still have about 10% that we're working on. The, and control over payroll processing, what that is, is, is that's looking at an overall, when payroll is processed, so some overall internal controls. We did note last year, we, we expected to have that completed with our new system implementation, but we went, we ended up breaking out our system implementation into two phases. The first phase was a conversion, basically, of the system itself, the second phase being process improvements, and so, we haven't gone through that process improvement phase. We'll be doing that in the coming months here, and that is where we plan to address that. The internal controls were manually reported, prepared, I'm sorry, spreadsheets. This is during the audit process. There are some, a lot of stuff we run right off of our, our, our financial system for the auditors, however, there are some spreadsheets that, that basically have to be prepared to be able to summarize things for the auditors and such, and it was certainly our goal to have a, a review process in place. There were a couple items that, especially with the, with the pension and the OPEB, because of the timing that we gave it to them to, as consecutively, at, at the time that we were reviewing it ourselves, and so, that was not fully implemented, intend to implement that. And then, the last one, as Paul mentioned, that basically was a, a comment on the pension plan funding status. So, basically, the reply there is talking about what the city has done, and it continues to do towards improving pension and retiree healthcare funding requirements and, and the outstanding obligations.
Mr. Brewer, you had prepared a document dealing with some of the repeat comments. Is there anything you want to bring to our attention?
No, like I said, is the, under response, it was similar responses from previous years, except for the update of the financial system, but how is your staffing level within the finance? Because obviously, the, the repeat comments of a lot of the timeliness of updates and stuff like that, do you feel you're adequately staffed to, to reflect where that comment might be eliminated in the future? Maybe next year, or the upcoming CAFR reviews?
Yeah, we are assessing that. We were able, we filled some, some key positions, and as the dust is settling, so to speak, as people are fully trained, become fully trained, and we're reallocating some duties, we are, we are assessing that situation, but much better than, than before. Some of those repeated comments a year ago were definitely due to that, the staffing, the vacant positions that we had, and, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Brewer.
And for your perspective, external, the representative for the external auditors, I didn't get your name, but do you feel that that representative, there, you do see improvement on some of the repeat comments, or all, all the repeat comments from the previous and the current year?
Yes, much is what Angie laid out here, and was written, yes, is what we had observed.
Okay. I had councilmembers, Spatafor, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a question related to recommendation on attachment A, pension and OPEB. You said you've observed that the scheduled contributions are not keeping pace with the interest in outstanding, any outstanding pension liabilities, and you recommend the city actively search for ways to reverse the negative trends and increase the funded status of those plans. You work with other municipalities?
Several, yes.
Okay. In this recommendation, I know there's nothing else written here, are there courses of action you could point us to that might, maybe we've not looked at?
It's, they're, they are all taking a comprehensive look at the benefits that are offered. I have seen several that have changed benefit terms as far as what benefits are offered. I've seen a number of municipalities, especially on the post-employment healthcare, some, some of each, they've, they've closed plans to new hires, they've done a lot of different things. A lot of them have changed from defined benefit to defined contribution, so like a 401K plan, that's probably been the most common change that I've seen, is changing from this defined benefit situation to a defined contribution plan, where it's easier to control those costs, you know what you're going to contribute, and you're not so dependent on market conditions or other factors.
Councilmember Jackson.
Councilmember Spatafor basically took my question, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. But I guess, has anybody, for the first municipalities that got on board with the change, have you or any of your colleagues or know any reports of that bottom line getting a chunk taken out of, or dropping like, you know, where we get some, something to look forward to?
Yeah, I mean, especially for those that really close the plan entirely, there, it can be a significant impact. I mean, because the actuary is projecting all of this information out on when individuals are going to retire, and if all of a sudden, you know, no new individuals can join the plan, that's going to, it's going to be a gradual process, but there will be a chunk that gets taken out over time.
But that also means no one's paying in, so, for, for those that are still in the retirement process. Councilmember Spatafor?
This one's for Angie, and it might be off-topic here, so tell me, they don't have that information, if you don't have that information, but what is the average, like, if I, if I were to say every dollar of salary that we pay citywide, a certain percentage goes back to our pension and OPEB liabilities? Is it 20%, 15%, 30%?
Uh, in terms of, so, so you're taking, as a percentage of someone's salary, so what, how much would be, have to be contributed to for pension and combination of-
City's obligation, yeah.
Yeah. So, there are two components of when we pay our pension and retiree healthcare obligations. There's one component that's for outstanding retirees, to the extent that they, that hasn't been fully funded in the past, and it is, that is the case with us for the reasons I spoke about before, because at the time, I'm sure they were thinking that, well, in terms of pension, that adequate amounts were being set aside, but things have changed, like I said, in rate of return, life expectancy, things like that. So, there are outstanding obligations for our retirees, as well as the employee that is working then, because, because obviously, there is a recognition of the benefit that they will someday receive. We have brought down the employee portion quite a bit through our restructuring of hybrid plans and, and limitations on retiree healthcare funding. The retiree portions are still rather large, same with, so that's the case for pension and retiree healthcare. So, long story short, though, if I take, I would say it's, I, I should know these numbers right off the top of my head, but I, we've, when you're taking into account the retiree portion, as well as the employee portion, it is almost a match. I'm trying to think the, or about, let's see, well, it depends on the salary, of course. I'd have to look at a, a percentage, because I, when I'm thinking of a specific salary, that's obviously going to differ for different, for different amounts, but we'll talk about that during the budget process.
Okay, yeah. If you could make sure to note that, because I'd like to know, on average, if we have 50 million in salary, we're spending X numbers on pension and OPEB as a percentage of-
Yeah, yeah. During the budget presentation, at the beginning of the budget hearings, I'll do a, a presentation on our, our pension and retiree healthcare liabilities, as well as other fringe benefits and things, and, and we'll get more into detail there.
Thanks.
Are there other questions? Did you have anything else for us, Paul?
I did not have anything specific. I just, you know, thank you for the opportunity to serve as your auditors. We very much appreciate it, enjoy the relationship, and again, it, thanks to Angie and her staff, it's, it's a very time-consuming, extensive process, so thank you.
Couple of questions. Angie, how long have we had this audit firm?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'd have to look. It's been several years, and it did precede my becoming Finance Director, and so, we are looking to go out to bid for that. I was thinking this next year, but we, with our Phase Two of our system implementation, as well as the programmatic budgeting, we are, we're assessing that. So, it may be the, we still have to talk about that a bit, but that, it may be the 2020 audit, where the next audit would be the 2019 audit.
All right. Councilmember Spitzley, as Chair of Ways and Means, one of the things I'd like you, if your committee would please take up and look at, let's look at the repeat comments that are in here, and how they're progressing for change. And I think the other question, which has been one that's been raised numerous times, is the staffing levels within the department, to see if that, a change in staffing would help with those repeat comments. So, if you could look at, at those two issues, that would be important.
Yes, Madam President.
All right, thank you. With that, we would entertain a motion to place on file. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move to place on file the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
All right. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Thank you very much. Yes?
If I could, I would just like to thank Paul, as, as well, as well as his, his team. We certainly appreciate the, their, when they, when he says it's a painful process, they try to make it as, as least painful as possible, so they, they do a nice job of that. And I also wanted to recognize not only finance staff, because there's a lot of preparation that my staff goes through to do this, but as well as other departments, because other departments, and certainly, certainly in terms of grant funding and things come into play too. So, really, it is a citywide effort to put together the financial statements, as well as to go through the audit, and so, and I would like to extend my appreciation.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, we're going to move to item B. I believe we have Jeff in the audience, and he's been waiting patiently, now knows how we earn our money.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could come to the table.
Okay.
This is an appointment to the Elected Compensation Commission, and this will also be voted on tonight, because their first meeting is on the-
Wednesday.
On Wednesday, and he is needed for a quorum, so he is very vital to this, to the committee. So, with that, we have your application, and if you would like to tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you'd like to serve in this position, and then, if councilmembers have questions, they will ask questions at that time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Jeff McAlvy, I've lived in the city for 25 years, with a west side Glasgow road off of Leberly. I own a lobby business, we got a merchant associate, which is just across the street, above the auto street, which I also am a partner in, and also own that building. So, I've been involved in the city, like I said, living here for 25 years, and it is-
Is, is your mic on? Is the green light on?
It is now.
All right.
Oh, sorry about that.
I had somebody in the audience going, okay.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Do you need me to repeat that?
No, that's okay. Keep going.
So, I was asked if I would be willing to serve on this. I, I don't want you to think I volunteered for this, but as I looked at it, I certainly am willing to. After working in the legislature and with the legislature for 30 years, I understand the importance of elected officials, and think of the role of making sure they are appropriately compensated, while at the same time respecting and taking care of the taxpayers' interests are important, so I'm willing to serve as part of this.
Do we have any questions for our applicant? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I wouldn't want you to leave without getting any questions, you know?
I appreciate that.
You waited all this time. So, it's just hard to, I mean, you said you don't necessarily want to, but you are willing to.
Yeah, I didn't say, I didn't say I didn't want to. I said I, I didn't ask to do this, but I'm willing to do it, certainly.
All right. Obviously, you wouldn't be up here and going through it.
Right, right. I honestly didn't even know it existed before, so.
Okay. Just wanted to give you a hard time.
I appreciate that.
Are there other questions?
I'm just shocked you didn't know about the green light. I'm going to tell somebody about that.
You know, it's, it's true, but as you know, Pat, as a lobbyist, I, I don't speak in front of committees. Try and keep that to a minimum, so.
All right. I see no other questions. Vice President Spatafor?
I would move the resolution to appoint Jeff McAlvy as a member of the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission, with a term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
We have a motion. If there are any questions or concerns, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. And again, that will be voted on this evening at the special council meeting. You're more than welcome to stay around if you do not want to. You will be able to go into the clerk's office anytime Tuesday, and between then and the meeting, and get sworn in.
Right. I, I am not able to, but I already have an appointment to get sworn in at 10:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us back to A, which is a reappointment of Anita Turner to, of Third Ward to the Medical Marijuana Commission. Are there any questions or concerns about the reappointment? Do I have a motion? We have a motion for the Third Ward Councilmember for the reappointment. Councilmember saying, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Okay. Next, we have the Lansing Hazardous Mitigation Plan. This was an item that was going to be taken up on the 28th. There was a deadline of the 31st for this plan to be in. This is the plan. This is the large binder of information that you have in front of you. The fact that the meeting was canceled, and then we were looking at having a special meeting just to pass this, my suggestion to the mayor was for him to use his emergency, under the Emergency Powers Act, to do an executive order and approve the plan, which would give us 30 days then to approve that. And so, that's what's before us today, and Chief?
Thank you, ma'am. The 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan is a- The 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan is a five-year plan that we started developing in the Office of Emergency Management. Yes, I'll, I get to go back to my old office for this one, which is kind of fun for me. In 2015, it's a very comprehensive plan. The plan that you have in front of you, there's an executive summary of the plan in general, which is the easier part to read. The plan itself is about 230 pages long. It is great bathroom reading if you, you've got some time to kill. The plan is all encompassing with regards to how the City of Lansing tries to identify hazards, whether they be natural or man-made that occur in our, our community, and how we want to try and reduce or mitigate those plant, those situations to make it a safer community. The plan, when adopted, allows us to apply for numerous grants, both federal and state. There's no money directly tied to the plan. The plan is not set in stone. Once we adopt it, we can change it as needed within that five-year cycle of the plan. It's just basically guidance for us and demonstration to the State Office of Emergency Management and FEMA that the City of Lansing takes community and public safety very serious on the mitigation side, and that we are trying to work forward in making a much safer community, and that just gives us our guidelines for applying for that money.
Are there any questions on this? I think my initial question would be, I know this went to the Planning Board back in September. Where did we end up in a glitch with this, that we were getting it at the last minute?
Actually, if I could, the, we received the plan back from FEMA and the Michigan State Police Office of Emergency Management Homeland Security in October with approval from them on us, our adoption. Our process next goes to the Planning Board. By the time we received it back, it was too late in November to get on the November Planning Board meeting, so we got on the December meeting. At the December meeting, it was approved and was supposed to be pushed forward. Equal responsibility from the Office of Emergency Management from the City and Planning Board. We assumed that the other was going to be pushing it to council for approval. There is no one person to blame. Myself, as the acting Emergency Management Director for the city at this time, I take full responsibility for that, that we just did not get it to you in a timely manner.
Any other questions? Seeing none, what we need is approval of a resolution to approve the plan and the mayor's executive order. Vice President Spatafor.
You said it best, so I will just move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And all of these will be coming out of committee of a whole, so you'll be reporting on these, Mr. Spatafor. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is setting the public hearing for Act 4, 2019, and this is for the Townsend Ramp. We would be setting the public hearing for the 11th, but we, because you cannot take action the same night as the public hearing on an act, we would then be voting on only this section on the 25th. The state has given us a extension to March 1st, so we would be passing everything else that is part of this plan, which would be the bonds, which would be the transfer of property, all of those on the 11th, and the only thing that would be left to pass would be the sale of the property. So we need a, a motion to set the public hearing. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution to reset the public hearing for Act 4-2019, sale of city property at the Townsend Parking Ramp at 221 Townsend Street to the Michigan Senate. The hearing will be at February 11th at 7:00 p.m.
All right, we have a motion. Questions or concerns?
This is for the next item.
Okay, see, yes, councilmember.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure that the delay is because we didn't have counsel.
The, the delay is because of the, both the city and state emergencies, and that's, that was transmitted to the Senate, and they agreed to give us an extension.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, we did the fire code, we set the public hearing on that. Next is the resolution for the Tifa Amendment 6, for the sale of the Townsend Parking Ramp. And is this what you're going to explain to us?
What was referred was not what law, I guess, authorized in the program, so this is the document that you should have in front of you.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the difference between the two, so that would be up to law.
Okay.
And quite frankly.
The light?
And frankly, I'm not aware of the differences from the resolution that was in your packet, and we're not sure how you guys got that resolution. We understand it was referred from the clerk's office, but we don't know how, because the version that we approved is in Laserfish, and that is a different version. So we pulled that one out of Laserfish, and it provided to you, this is more complete and to the point. The other, the, the resolution that was in your packet was not complete. This one is. So that's why we have replaced it with your, for your consideration with this current resolution.
Okay, the, the question that I have for you, Mr. Abud, is this resolution, the sale of the ramp?
No, it is not.
Okay, because I don't want us voting on something we haven't had the public hearing on. That, that, that's not called transparency, so, okay.
We agree.
All right. So this has to do with the bonds with Tifa?
That's correct.
All right. So that we're all clear of what this is. If you remember, we were given the sheet that outlined six or seven different steps that we had to get to in order to complete this, this action. So with that, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I would move the Tifa Amendment resolutions, the resolution to the Tifa Amendment Number 6 for the, to authorize the authority to substitute the property after the sale of the Townsend Parking Ramp.
Okay.
Does that work, Mr. Abud?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Next is the defecants, um, bonds on the Townsend Ramp. Okay, let's see. That is the one that has the sort of pinkish tag on, on it, okay? Are there any questions on this? With that, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution authorizing the defecating of the bonds related to the Townsend Parking Ramp.
All right. With that, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Then last, and Alec is here, is the issuance of the sale of the wet weather control bonds for the state. We were given a map.
And bullet points. That should be a bullet.
Yeah, and bullet points. And this is, this is something that is on the agenda this evening, again, under the special council meeting, because of the time factor of getting this done and being able to move forward with the projects.
Yes, it was on the agenda for the canceled meeting, I'm pretty sure.
As a?
Referral.
Referral.
Correct.
Right. All right.
Good evening. This, last year, just to start at square one, last year, we worked on a project plan that came in front of city council, worked with you all on approval of that project plan, which subsequently goes to the state, the DQ, who subsequently approved it. In that project plan, there were three of your standard CSO sewer separation projects, but now with the wet weather control program, we also have other priorities, which includes things like this project. This was the fourth of the four projects, going first, though, in order of schedule. We generally do the project plans in five-year blocks. It works well, that's what the DQ expects of us. They don't want us to get too far out ahead of our plan, but this represents the first project in Phase Two of the Wet Weather Control Program. It's a sewer rehab project for the Central Interceptor, which was a marvel of construction in 1930. It served us well, but we have to give it some attention now and, and rehab it, so we don't have a catastrophic failure at some point. This is, by the map, you can see that it's oriented along the river. It crosses under the river with some sewer siphons. It carries approximately 60% of the sewage from the community. Unlike sewer separation projects, they, it, it's done from within the pipe, so there's not a lot of excavation. There are bypass pipes that are utilized to, so the work within the sewer can be done, and it bypasses the sewage around the work area. Lastly, again, it was part of the approved project plan that we worked with you all last year on. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you folks have.
Okay, and just for clarification, I said it was on this council for adoption tonight, it's on for the 11th for adoption, so I, I want to clarify that, I'm sorry. This particular one, is this the, for part of Scott Woods? Is this part of the interceptor?
No.
Okay.
I think you're referring to a different project. This is, this is all west of Scott Woods.
All right, I just wanted to make sure on that.
Yeah, that's a different, that's the Willard Ab Pump Station project you're thinking of there, that has the sewage forced main through Scott Woods Park.
All right. This will be published on the 6th, and that gives us enough time to make the deadlines for the 11th?
Yeah, it was going to be, you were going to authorize it on the 11th, and it'd be published on the 13th, I think, right?
Okay.
Yeah, the original date has to be changed.
Okay, so this has to be changed?
Yes, because this was an anticipation it was going to get referred on the 28th.
Okay. So in your document, it's in red, it says February 6th, it should say the 11th. Are there any questions or concerns? Yes, Mr. Vice President?
Madam President, I move the amended resolution for the issuance and sale of wet weather control program state revolving fund project obligation bond.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That takes care of all the items on the agenda. Now we have a motion that will probably take longer than what it will be to be back there to go into closed session, and I would turn to the Vice President for that motion.
Madam Vice President, pursuant to MCL 15.268E, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the Lansing City Council concerning these cases. Adesver City of Lansing, Block 100 v. City of Lansing and Lansing Building Authority, Burwell v. Anderson, Liskowitz, Kelly, Otter, Kirk, and Ridenhour, City of Lansing Treasury v. Brown Rachel, City of Lansing v. Belay Keith, City of Lansing et al. v. Purdue Pharma et al. opioid litigation, Epley v. BWL and City of Lansing, Fineout v. Kostanko v. Property Holdings LLC v. City of Lansing Medical Marijuana Commission, Funk v. City of Lansing, Gammet Group, Gardiner, Holsey Hill, Greenwave Naturals LLC v. Lansing City Clerk, Huron Wellness and Solutions LLC v. Lansing City, City of Lansing, excuse me, Lansing v. York, Lynn Michael v. City of Lansing, McEwen Michael v. Lansing Police Department, Michigan Department of Transportation v. Safety National Casualty Corporation, Motorist Mutual Insurance Company v. City of Lansing et al. and LaPhil Gallery LLC et al. v. City of Lansing et al. consolidated, Ormond Park, Ostasiewski v. City of Lansing formerly v. O'Boyle Ray v. City of Lansing, Spalding Estate of v. Eaton County et al., Superior Wellness and Solutions LLC v. City of Lansing, TRJ and E Properties v. City of Lansing.
And before we do the roll call on this, this, for those that have watched city council or have sat up here before, normally we just say we are closing to go into closed session to discuss litigation. It's my understanding there's been a court decision that, that now requires that we go through and list all the ones that we're going to be dealing with. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We, we've had recent case law, and so we are specifying now the cases that we are going into closed session to discuss, just to be fully transparent and in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, with that, please call the roll for closed session.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
And with that, we are inviting the Chief of Staff of the City Attorney's Office, or Chief of Staff of the Mayor's Office to go into closed session with us as well.
So, I see, could you discuss on inter?
Yeah, if there's no, we could, we could.
Well, you got back already?
I made it back from Tucson, yes. Now Friday, I'm leaving for Florida, there's six days. So hopefully, I'll, I'll lay us for that one.
Well, you missed the weather here, right?
No, I was here for.
Oh, you were?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I hope, Carol, Carol Friday, that's right. I said, feeling, and she's, she's.
Actually, neither of the rain, it's, it's, I actually looked at what they said.
Yeah, two, I just, yeah.
See what they, so.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't. She's, she's.
I don't see if she's.
She doesn't have, so, I guess, but I.
She wasn't sure, this week or next week, or what?
That is the one.
That's a lot of that.
I mean, I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
I can't.
I mean, I don't.
I don't.
I don't.
I can't.
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 Yeah, that doesn't help us know what we want to talk about, comments before.
Well, I guess, it sounds like they're just covering all litigation, because they may be covering anything, so that way they can tell us, here's all the ongoing lawsuits, and then they may, uh, what do you want of them?
Okay, well, but it gives us that information anyway.
Yeah.
Is that your phone?
Okay.
I thought the people were starting up.
What does that come from?
I thought it was the start of a bluegrass song, you know, because they'll start playing music during their, you know, break, okay? I'm intrigued.
Well, I'm glad that that happened during the weekend, because that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good ringtone, though, because it doesn't sound like anyone else's.
Okay.
Is that your phone?
Okay.
Where does that come from?
I thought it was the start of a bluegrass song, you know, because they'll start playing music during their, you know, break. I'm intrigued.
Well, I'm glad that that happened during the weekend.
Yeah, that's music. That's a good ringtone though, because it doesn't sound like anyone else's. I think that sounds familiar.
Well, that's the theme. How's the reaction to picking up other things? I don't know. I don't know what her personally thought. So, I don't know. I don't know if it was.
Do they have kind of like a part one, maybe a little part? Sherry asked me, I think I pushed. Well, remember I put the agenda together, I'll push it to six and he pushed this year and this is what we're all doing. And so.
I guess because it was hostile and committed whatever.
And I asked her to push, it's a problem, and she did, so. And there were things in six already that, so, yeah. Do you have the substitutes for tonight? You, I thought they were putting them in. No, you said. But they were putting them in separate packages. And I probably want to. To us. Sherry. Friday. So for the council agenda for February eleven, I made a copy of the twenty eighth. So that all the curls. I like to see the action menus are still in there. And then on the other. Here we go, all right. Right, okay. And I believe it went that way last night. For people's office.
Oh.
I thought that would be a good place to start.
Oh, well, happy anniversary. The public service. So, how are you doing, Carol? What are our residents moving?
Yeah, I think. Yeah. Well, you got one. What were you looking for? It's about a star.
Yeah, I know. So, that was there. I don't know if he's coming. But his girlfriend Carrie is gonna start coming, not in the race week, but February, her in March meetings, she's gonna come. She has to take off at night to come, but she's gonna be putting the request in. First Thursday is off, so she'll be coming. Who's there? Uh, we have a potential new member for our friends at the cemetery. Oh, nice. Yeah. Doesn't look like there's a lot of them. Well, this is just very special, it's not a regular helsa maybe. And that threw me off because I, well, when I planned for the trip, I thought we're gonna miss missing any helsas. Well, now, I'm going over there in helsa.
Not so successful. Four. So how are you doing? Alex, do you have a? And do you have any assumptions?
Uh, I wasn't here for it, so I didn't get here till late. Yeah, I didn't get here till late. Was hoping to be here for five thirty, but I was too many invoicing again, because I had, there's like five different steps to get invoices out in the mail. And the last step is print the statements. But I had them all printed and I thought, okay, kind of start stepping on the books and starts looking through stuff in the mail. These don't make sense. They almost match the invoices. And I finally figured out, well, when I set up the statement parameters, I had put January instead of January. So I had to throw all those away, pull them out where I had already inserted them, go back, reprint them all and then reinsert two thousand dollars.
Do you have forever stamps?
Yes.
But it's not as screwed. It's supposed to be fifty five cents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Because if it was me, I would have been.
The time I expected to have to get here by five thirty.
Carol, I see you're looking at the recycling thing. Did you, well, they sent out the wrong schedule.
I would put it smart enough, because I didn't want them.
My neighbors again, they're stuck with their bins off since Christmas time. And, um, I, when we get the new Camerader, I put them on all the days.
I think Sally doesn't get them.
And they put the, you know, they didn't pick it up. So, I called the optist, he gets a recording that says, well, we sent out the wrong schedule. And they never corrected it properly. So, nobody else.
I know you don't care your own calendar day rolls. What is I here to ask you? Um, I said something, we don't. Go for it.
You don't get to go long yet?
Is there something certified right away?
Yeah, if you need something like tomorrow, I would say shoot me an email or something that I may wait for Wednesday. If I have some other urgent things, so. So if you have something you need to say this, shoot me. Or send me an email or whatever.
Couple of things are already late.
Right. Getting my camera to it. But I'm glad you said it.
Yeah, I don't see all these.
Oh, yeah.
Three in the morning on the third, so like. So I was fourteen hours ahead. It was fourteen hours ahead and then like the end of the day, the next day, I'm like. But didn't even, I mean, it just gave me the message it was delayed.
That came in. So I could see. I could see.
Sure. I think it's two. They think they're some.
Well, they, they used to look their server up or X Y L.
Why don't we do it?
Which is why, which is why she's giving a little great period because. So price fired. I guess. Also, the IT. Correct, so the, the substitutes. Better date this. Church enjoying. I wonder. How many users are there? Are you using or system? Does he have to go all the way down? But. Okay, I'll, I'll. Two.
Thanks. Why are they on the side of the church?
They're downstairs, I picked one up.
Oh. And the first place is gonna be a Friday. In April, last Sunday, we're gonna do a Dobby Easter casserole. Oh. And we're just gonna be in. We're in Mount Home Cemetery in the Patrick Morland. Oh, my. Come down the entry and pray around past the judges and crowds. We'll have surprises. We're together. Try to get any croquet balls to be in other competitions. Probably in the fourth. They have three, because we have four, we have ties. So. Well, that's. Yeah, makes me wish I hadn't done that. So, well, we've started, um, two years ago in April, we started trying to do a small fundraiser in April. And then our big one is the racing box. In the second year, we were gonna do the barber shop in Marquette, we got stormed out. Yeah. So, we did a reschedule barber shops because.
People are missing.
Yeah, well, that. Not about redoing, you know, trying to reclaim the barber shop. We called out, they wanted all the barber shops. The only one in your, that ship here in the state is that. So unless, um, they change the time of the lunch, we don't do a barber shop. We might do sweet ad lines at some point. In the cemetery? Yeah. There's hills big enough, but there wouldn't be a clear enough path without pit and range. There's section C, well, in a bowl, that's, that's where the Patrick Morland. Yeah.
There's, it's not steep enough.
No. Section C would be the only one that would be steep enough. You have a pit and range. That's the one where the bike holders would have better. That's the only one that's.
It's a guy who'd be definitely to work.
To go for a race. But we don't wanna do anything disrespectful to the gravesites. And. I stopped in the way in Athena's, have you ever gone there? Athena's, I was here. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it used to be a long time.
Previously, it's a secret. It was a restaurant called.
Yeah.
They're opening. Back gas station, they should have fresh from second. So, yeah. They're open for. They're. They're making fresh tortillas. And they're gonna have, also we could.
Well, I've been in the one in Old Town, just one fine. And it was really good. Decent prices, decent service.
Oh, just super.
Oh, isn't it good?
We've never been there before, but it's always so packed. And we just left. We pretty much had a reservation. Everybody served, it's really good. It was fresh. It was, yeah, it was, it was like half from the camp and more packed than it did not.
I like, I've been there several times, I, I go in there sometimes on the way home from meetings. Like coming out of here, like had anything to drink yet today, so. So, before I came over, I stopped, we had a cup of soup, those sales. Yeah, it was quite good. Chicken noodle soup was excellent, called the chicken noodle, ate the noodle soup. Really? Yeah, it was very good. And then I had a turkey sandwich. Count, uh, the average of the noodles, about fifteen dollars, which, well, consider that higher than that, I don't consider that on the road. You've got a little bit of fulfillment or something. Exactly. Just got very.
How is your dad doing?
Pretty good. Uh, he gets more confused more easily about more things, but he's going.
Sorry about the infected.
Still able, in my view, to live on his own.
People in Halloween.
He is a, uh, he's. He died a year and a half ago, had a daughter on, granddaughter on the ground near him. They stay over close, yes, they keep an eye on him. And she goes over, granddaughter goes over, helps him clean.
So, I'm not allowed to, like, my own calendar.
Oh.
I'd say this, my daughter is in gymnastics, maybe some Friday Saturday. The state championships. If it's Friday or Saturday, I'll do it. Sunday.
That's understandable, absolutely.
That's what Chelsea tomorrow is gonna tell you, maybe, you know, but that's.
Okay, great, thanks.
Speaking of Hannah, as, um, is it previewed the Super Bowl for Hannah? It's only this top seven. I was like, I wanted to see that. I had watched U of M gymnastics, like, working out and I was like, oh, I could see Hannah there. Yeah. I was like, Indians on a Saturday or something. I guess it gives them the rest. We'd look for actions. We record. Yeah. She's getting some of the hardware. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
So sixty miles out.
Yeah, yeah. We're just sitting in the back lot.
Somebody was supposed to get home to take with them.
Yeah, well, given it's a Friday, we were got.
So he drove himself.
Resolute, you know.
But when he left, he, long term, he got confused and freaked out.
Into the right place.
Before he figured out how to get home.
And they made change.
Six miles from home.
Made the correction. And so Greg has in the email.
Sort of things halfway, he's pretty good.
Never adult. No.
Mentally, you know, he, he's still, I mean, he gets confused about stuff like when I was there, we'd say, all right, I'll see you in the morning at this time. I don't know what it is. He'd say, yeah, but he repeated. And then he'd show up an hour earlier. You know, closer, livable conditions, it's not to a point where I think you can back me on this almost. So hopefully, you know, we stay alone for the next year until I can back out again next year. So, hopefully, he's gonna be staying home for the next year, till I go back out again next year.
Well, there was a separate email, so I carried it off the. Should be.
At least with Greg, you beat it. She should. Thank you. Last week's meeting.
That's one of those tricky things, you know, I mean, he can still add, subtract, find, do a building, do his check, probably all his money stuff is still. He's on top of that.
So they can, they're not allowed.
He, he wasn't sure about what he needed, and we're, we're not a collection, you know, he could sell it in the wife, but he can try to make himself. Actually, you know, and then he put the. The stone.
I don't know my wife.
And then couldn't understand why his eggs freaked out.
Anyway.
That's the thing, you know, especially these Teflon type things, there's a family, it's over. Yeah, it's just a memory.
So, I just texted my daughter too, and I have actually done that.
I laughed, I have.
Sure, thanks.
I, I do that, I will text people.
I love it, kids, over, upstairs over the weekend, you know, sitting there at bed, like, you have to follow, whatever, reading one of the. Called my son, said, Ryan, like, grab a cup of tea. Why can't you do it, I think, because you're fourteen, you're in my house, bring me up a cup of tea.
That's what I make.
It was awesome, I was like, I hung up the phone, I took, I looked at Aaron's house, and he was like, four. And he goes, anyway, you can do it, there was no way you could do it.
You know, once the press changes, I think he's good.
Bring me up, bring me a cup of tea. And he did.
Was it the right time?
It was, it was. It was awesome.
When she died, I tried to get on, but she couldn't, as far as three kids are, as great kids, we're all living here, we're all here in the lives here. No, he's been out there twenty seven days, he's home now, we had all the circle friends, he had his doctors, he had the weather, and, you know. And he's, well, you know, it gets to a point where you're not safe alone by yourself, I mean, I have no choice but to go back, because I can't deal with you here. So, my, my girls, for instance, or, or, yeah, I can't imagine, I'm surprised, I can't, I can't, I don't know. It was so bad, they don't, my family is right. Yeah. And, and, that's not something we have to worry about with him, for getting to, you know, his sister, he can't fix something himself, or go to the restaurant on site. Though he's got three or four little restaurants nearby, and he's pretty decent, they all know him, and all the kids, so. And he's, he's okay on money, and there's no concern about money at all, so, even if, um, because he's a veteran, even if he ended up in a facility, you know, he can't take all his money, because. So, I don't have to worry about, you know, he can go with, you know, an assistant brother or something, and all his money, and chew it out, so, that's fine. Like, in Florida, I need to get older for a couple of years, and my brother and my sister won't start, uh, six years ago. Come down to the.
Sherry's still copper, quick.
Clearwater, actually.
I'm very glad you just retired. And, um, they left.
Eight, six.
To, to Tampa for three months.
Oh, three months, well, I can't do that, I, I can't do that full week, but, um, I had a friend from, um, my junior high, high school, and, uh, their college, he's. Another friend that was back to me, she was a family friend back before my sister was born, and my sister's sixteen.
I think it was gonna be coming.
She's in Florida, and I never really paid attention to that one. Once I started thinking, maybe I could get the time and money to go to the others, um, I started looking for where they were at, and I could fly to Tampa, and one's an hour one way, and one's an hour the other way, and one's an hour the other way. So they're all three within an hour, and some directions from Tampa.
So you can be company and make the flights, sort of, just.
Yeah, so. Well, yes, and so I thought, well, you know, this is some kind of sign, they're all together, you know.
So you have a free place to stay.
Exactly, flying in, renting a car, driving to London, it's over, um, she's actually in a place called Eagle Pass, it's close to Goodard even. I'll stay Friday night, Saturday with her, Sunday, and I'll try to, for a while, and, uh, sister tomorrow, and Saturday, Sunday and Monday with them. And then Tuesday morning, I'll go with Richie, Richie to see the other friend, and then, uh, Tuesday evening, I'll drive back into Tampa, and stay in the air. Hotel is in there, because I don't wanna drive on second flight, yeah, I have to be here, point at six thirty in the morning, to fly over to New York. So, I'm not gonna try and drive from Richie in the dark at my unfamiliar boat, just to, we're part of six thirty in the morning, so I'm gonna just stay overnight in a hotel there.
Well, not too much.
I should get back here by noon or two, I'm staying. So I don't have to pay for one hotel night, and, so.
Resetting.
Catch yourself. Well, you know, all the years that we were married, we never, I never, when we were, they didn't need to track the time, the money, and both. So finally, last year was the first year, and I can start. We've been married thirty, thirty years. Last year, thirty five years, so, the dot. Didn't do much traveling. Yeah. Did hardly any traveling for like thirty five years, no vacations, just. Been here, you know, do it while you can, because if you're not, another year, you might not be able to make the trip.
She, uh, that's where I was, you know, the nature trip, don't care, the most.
You've just got to be.
I would love to, my bucket list is Italy and Jerusalem. Italy, there's a town in Italy that's named after.
Is there?
Oh, yeah.
It's called St. Peter's. But she takes major trips every evening.
I hope that was laughter, though, right?
She just, she went to Greece recently, and she's going to France.
Well, there's a town in Italy called Pisa, and it's only three. And we don't know, we were named after it, or it was named after us, but it's, and they're like, rather small, years ago, just like the example, it's already.
There was some Pisa, some.
Yeah, they're related.
They're just.
Yeah.
Judy.
And, I don't know them all, because I wasn't born and raised here, but when I first moved down here, and my phone number first showed on the phone, it was before, very soon, so. Then I got a call from John Pisa, who was my, my police officer. And, uh, first thing he said to me was, I want you to know, we're all related, so rip your blood, but don't worry, I'm not mafia.
You did, yeah.
And I thought, well, that's an awful, strange thing to say to anybody, let alone from a police officer, and then later I found out that there were relatives in Detroit area, and there were cops there. Oh, way back, thirties and forties.
Oh, that.
Yeah. Different times. So, all, all the ones around here aren't related, but they're so distant that, I don't know the connections. So if you'd like to go near, I'd like to go to, uh, Jerusalem, uh, the place where I was, I could see. Although the most of places, I would like, whether anywhere else would be great, but there's no real desire to go anywhere else, or else to. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. She.
Yeah.
But she, she said, oh, but it was, I'm not sure, it was for, it was for.
Yeah.
She was talking, I don't know, she. What was this, compared, you know, to, she was, I said. There was something about, you know, it was something about the shell, or something like that, you know, she.
It's weird, oh, cool. Well, the only trip I've leave, other than to Canada, which was to, my dad was in the service, and we come back and forth for some vacations, which was only three years. But, um, between high school and college, I worked at high school in Spain, and of course, too, we got transferred to, our senior year, that was for. So, between high school and college, I flew over to, first time I worked, and I got a plane to Detroit, I flew from Detroit to Newark, and Newark to Rome. And they picked me up in Rome, and they were in Naples, and so we went downtown, and we saw, but they were all, we couldn't, they, the, the one to Naples, where they were staying. And, um, I was there for nine days, count travel on either, you know, you know, around, so we saw Boston Naples, we went to, I'm not thinking, to the suburbs.
This is a little bit.
Pretty much, it's around the world, these two places around there.
Yeah.
But that was in nineteen seventy two. Nineteen seventy two, they were coming back, you know, and a few words, very few. My dad doesn't live in, but he, we're all in the room, but he doesn't live very near, but anyway, coming back, in nineteen seventy two, they still had the, all the X-ray type machines, and. They need to bring your camera and your film through the X-ray machines. And all these, oh, I had all these rules of color film, and it's just, you know, to, to, you can't, they can put this through all, there's everything. Oh, you have to go through, it's not gonna affect your pictures, I remember the thing, they, they were gonna, either arrest me, or I had to put my film through. So, I put the film through, uh, I was a line customer, so it was really, um, I had one roll of black and white pictures, and I got all the color pictures.
Right.
But it was quite an experience, too, so. Well, I hope, whatever that noise we heard was was happy voice, not sad voice. I hope something, I guess, I could. Yeah, it was.
Just learn.
It was, yeah, well, that's true, it was, basically, it's not. Yes, so. Um, um, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to do that tomorrow, it's another time, I have two thirty to three thirty, and I have to be home by six thirty. Two, three thirty, and six thirty, and one, and one, so, so, a session, so, 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 so they could, you know, go here, a full session, and, uh.
I love you on that, I don't have, but, um, you know, I actually broke it, um, copied it, plus, pretty much, to say, yeah, someone called up, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what did you write, schedule one, you, one day, Arizona. Might you do in Chicago, or?
Yeah, well, it was no problem at all, I was scheduled to fly, but Tuesday, and I didn't get here till Thursday, I knew. Tuesday, we were on, waiting at the airport, when they start getting messages from the airline, your flight's delayed, now your flight's delayed more. Well, now your flight's not delayed, you're back in time, well, now your flight's delayed again, now it's, now it's canceled, both flights are canceled. So I ended up having to check back in the hotel, I checked out of, like, same room back for another night.
I think we missed the rooms.
Yeah, I think I missed, I had spare set of clothes and money, um, so I ended up staying the next day in Tucson, and then, uh, when I flew out, I rented a stay in Chicago. My flight was delayed even Tucson, so by the time it landed in Chicago, the landing flight left ten minutes before. Then it was the last flight out, I had spent fourteen hours in Chicago on air, and then the only way I got out then was either. Florida, the American Airlines agent to transfer me to United flight, where I would've been there another ten hours.
Oh, my gosh.
So she got me on the last seat of the last, in the flight.
Weather, weather running.
Yeah, it was, it was the.
Running the car in twelve thirty.
Well, I didn't have, like, my car was in the garage, I'd taken the air service to airport, and somebody said, well, take the train from Chicago, take the train, well, the trains were canceled too. I mean, so, so I was, I was stuck.
You know, you're sitting in the front, something later, and something.
Yeah. I got back a day and a half, like. But thank goodness, my friend was.
And she's such a lovely, funny, she's, you know.
I debated, I really did, I thought, do I wanna do this again, so in case the weather's bad again, but if I waited, um, my time for when I was able to take the time was really, you know. In the past, and then Diane, my friend, was taking, her, her, she couldn't do it the other weekend, and I probably did another week or two, it was really in spring break crowds. And I didn't want to be in spring break crowds either, so, somebody told me that it was supposed to be. Well, I have a.
You look, you look.
It's too hard to predict.
I had a daughter, and I was, I was, he was, he was. Can you jump us in here? Yeah, sure. It was the day before, it was my hair, and I answered, it was hot, and I was really, and the weather was, and I, all I could see was reflection, reflection, side of the road, that's all I could see, couldn't see any signs, cause.
Wow, that's a good six hour ride with good weather.
Yeah, it was.
Five hours in good weather.
Then we had to come back, and, you know, and I thought, man, I was hot damn for that, how dare you.
Yeah, a good day, five hours to get to Chicago. Of course, depends on where you're going, it's all, but, yeah, okay.
We have reconvened the, uh, committee of the whole, and we are now going to adjourn the committee of the whole and go into the, uh, council meeting. So with that, we are adjourned. As soon as the city attorney, or the city clerk gets down here, we're ready to go.